City Code. A couple of weeks ago, Council President Ginther and myself and Mayor Coleman proposed having a domestic partnership registry in the city of Columbus as part of our continuing effort to promote diversity and welcome diversity and equality in the city of Columbus because we're an open and smart city, and frankly, it's just the right thing to do. A domestic partnership registry in conjunction with domestic partnership benefits, which our city recognizes, as well as our extensive and broad code against discrimination that ranges from everything from veteran status to the traditional race, sex, and religion to LGBT status and familial status is just really the next step in what the city of Columbus can do to promote openness and tolerance and diversity. Not only does it strengthen families by having a domestic partnership registry, but it also promotes business in the city of Columbus because there are businesses and folks looking to relocate, businesses looking to relocate, and when they look at the city of Columbus, they see that we're an open city, we're a tolerant city, and we're an accepting city, and that's important to me as part of the leadership of the city that we continue down that path. And there's also a health and awareness aspect to it. And that is, when I was at the Human Rights Campaign Gala, a story that was shared with me was an individual who worked for a small business whose insurance offered domestic partnership benefits, but really no mechanism in a way that he could be eligible to receive them. And he came up to me and he said, you know, "Zach, thank you so much for your, for the proposed registry because I was, you know, there was a time when I was, I was really ill and my partner worked for a company and I worked for a company and both of the companies recognize the partner, domestic partnership benefits, but we had no method of telling the insurance company and telling our business like that we're in a committed relationship and if we had the registry, we'd be able to point and say, 'Look, we're, you know, we're on this registry, so we should be eligible.' So this is a step in the right direction. It's the right thing to do." I'd like to recognize Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for joining us this evening. So the nuts and bolts of, of the registry as proposed are twofold. The first are the criteria that, I should say, that the original language that was proposed, and that the purpose of the hearing is to flush out the language. The original language is proposed under Part A is, "Share with an adult co-applicant a government-issued marriage license whether recognized by the state of Ohio or not." And I got to thinking about that and the way as currently written means that there are same or opposite-sex married individuals that could be on the registry, and there's certainly nothing wrong with that, but it just seems counterintuitive that you would be married and be on the domestic partnership registry. So I am going to propose amending the language to really get to the intent, and that is, "Share with an adult co- applicant a government-issued marriage license not recognized by the state of Ohio." And the reason why this is in here frankly was I was fortunate enough to be on all sides with Ann Fisher. And Ann had a guest on. It was a same-sex couple who were, was married in New York. And the individual, one of the individuals asked me, you know, "Zach, we're married in New York and it's not recognized by the state of Ohio, can we still be on your registry?" And I kind of shook my head and scratched my, scratched my head and I was like, "Well, I don't really know. It doesn't make any sense why you shouldn't, why you can't be on our registry." Because if the state of Ohio is not going to recognize your marriage, the whole purpose of the things that we spoke about while we have a domestic partnership registry, it would be counterintuitive not to allow you, while the state of Ohio does not recognize your, your marriage, to be on our, on our registry. And subsequent to that is that if another state in our union is going to issue a marriage license, and certainly the city of Columbus should recognize that as evidence that you could be on our domestic partnership registry. And that really is the first criteria that if you can present a marriage license from another state and you're, and it's a marriage license not recognized by the state of Ohio, then that should, that is de facto evidence that you're in a committed relationship and can be on our domestic partnership registry. Now, there is a Part B, so if you're not married in another state, Part B is certain factors that one can use to establish to be on the domestic partnership registry. The first factor is, "Are not currently married to another adult as recognized by Ohio law." Second, "Are not legally separated from another person either under statutory or common law." Third, "Shares responsibility for each other's common welfare." And four, "Are at least 18 years of age and mentally competent to consent to contract." And five, "Are financially interdependent as evidenced by factors that are designated." So the domestic partnership registry under the, the second subsection allows individuals, whether they are LGBT or straight individuals that are not married, to sign up on the, on the registry and be able to declare their relationship under the city of Columbus. And that's really the nuts and bolts of what is being proposed for the, the domestic partnership registry in the city of Columbus. And I'd like to, if she wishes, give Councilmember Tyson an opportunity to, to say anything if, if you wish. I certainly appreciate you coming and supporting this hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, and I certainly am in support of the domestic partner registry. I think it will certainly allow couples the opportunity to have the recognition and services and, that are necessary to move forward in their relationships. And so I am here in support of your legislation and wanted to hear the testimony and be a part. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Before we get on to the testimony, I would like to turn the microphone over to the city clerk, Clerk Blevins, to discuss, now that, now that I've kind of outlined the substance, she's going to outline the procedures of, you know, this is something, if you're listening, this is something you want to take advantage of, she's going to tell you how to do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Tyson. I've been asked to cover some specifics about the registry, and this will be included in a frequently asked questions document, which we will make available on council's website and once the documents are finalized. So basically to start, applications for the domestic partner registry will be available on the Columbus City Council website, which is www.columbuscitycouncil.org, or by request through the city clerk's office at 645-7380. Applications may be submitted in person or by mail. Because original signatures are required for the registry, applications may not be submitted electronically. Applying by mail, basically you'll just forward the original notarized form and a $50 registration fee payable by check or money order made payable to the Columbus City Treasurer. These will be forwarded to the office of the city clerk. Attention, domestic partner registry. After processing, the applicants will be mailed a personalized certificate and two business card-sized certificates and a copy of their notarized application. We are allowing ourselves up to 30 days for processing. We don't anticipate it will take that long, but since we're just getting started, we're going to have that there. If you apply in person, applicants would bring their original notarized application to the office of the city clerk here on the second floor of City Hall during regular business hours. The application will be reviewed, make sure it's complete, and then the applicants will pay their $50 registration fee downstairs on the first floor in the city treasurer's office, and we will, there will be given a receipt for that. The registration fee provides, as I said, you will receive a certificate and two business card-sized certificates. Another question that came up was how to terminate a registered domestic partnership. Once registered, each member of the domestic partnership has a responsibility to report the end of the domestic partnership to the city of Columbus so that the registration can be terminated. This will be done by completing a notice of termination of domestic partnership form, which also will be available through the city clerk's office, which you can request by phone, or it will be available on our website. There is no cost to file a notice of termination of domestic partnership. Those can be submitted by mail. Only one party is required to sign the notice of termination. However, that party is responsible for sending a copy of the form to the other party if the other party is still living. In the event one of the partners is deceased and at such time the remaining partner should wish to register another partnership, a copy of a death certificate or a published obituary from a periodical or newspaper is sufficient documentation for the clerk's office to then list the partnership as terminated in the registry. Another question that came up is, is either party required to live or work in the city of Columbus to register their partnership? And is there a geographic restriction for registering a partnership? And there is none. There's no requirement that either party live or work in the city. Any domestic partnership that meets the city of Columbus criteria may be registered. It's also important to note when asked about domestic partnership information and whether that's a public record. As a government, the city of Columbus is bound by state laws regarding the disclosure of public records. Information submitted to register a domestic partnership is a public record, and the city is generally required to provide this information to any media outlet, business, organization, or individual that requests it. Except as authorized or allowed by state law, there's no method to remove any of the information, including an applicant's name or address, from the public record. Individuals may choose to not register their domestic partnership and to not share their personal information with the city if they wish to limit public access to their personal information. When will domestic partnerships become valid and is there a waiting period? Our registry will go into effect on August 29, 2012, assuming that the legislation passes on Monday. It is written as 30-day legislation, so it takes effect 30 days from the date of passage. That date would be August 29. No domestic partnerships can be registered before that date. After that date, a domestic partnership would be considered registered when the clerk or my staff enters information into the registry. A domestic partnership then is valid until a notice of termination of domestic partnership is received and filed in the office of the city clerk or upon the death of one of the Applicants, are they required to live at the same address full-time to qualify sharing a common address? Applicants are required to share a common address, but are not required to have only one address. Applicants may have separate vacation home, investment property, or second address. That question has come up to us as well. But they need to at least have one common address, and that's the address that's asked for on the application. Another question is, "How do I receive benefits once a domestic partnership has been registered?" And we wanted to make sure we covered that as well. You would speak directly to the organization from which you seek to receive a discount or benefit. By itself, the domestic partner registry does not provide any special discounts or access to benefits. It is a tool that domestic partners can choose to show that they are eligible for domestic partner benefits offered by employers or a family discount provided by businesses and organizations, as Councilmember Klein indicated. The registry is seen as a way for domestic partners to record their relationships and for businesses and organizations to have a neutrally administered means of qualifying a person for benefits or discounts that they may choose to offer. The registry is entirely optional for all parties. No domestic partnership is required to, to be registered. No company is required to provide discounts or benefits. No company is required to recognize the domestic partner registry as a qualification for whatever discounts they choose to offer. This registry also does not take the place of a power of attorney for legal matters, so they are not related and, and should not be confused that one takes the place of the other for intended purpose. And then last, if the questions that you have were not answered and how can you get more information, you can contact the office of the city clerk by phone at 645-7380 or by email at cityclerkrequests@columbus.gov.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. I do want, before I get to our speakers, I would like just to clarify an additional point about the binding authority of the registry on private enterprise, which the clerk outlined the city Columbus's jurisdictional authority does not reach, but it does reach the city of Columbus itself, and as previously noted, the city of Columbus does offer domestic partner benefits. And this law, proposed law and the registry law will amend that language to say that if you are registered on the, the registry as a, in a domestic partnership relationship, then that itself, that in itself will mean that you and your partner would be eligible for city benefits. So there are, there are other criteria that are, that mirror the, the criteria that were previously mentioned. So if you are in a relationship and for whatever reason don't want to be on the registry, that's fine. There are still the same criteria that exist that, to make you and your partner eligible. But if you don't want to have to go through the checklist and you want to simply sign up on the registry, that in itself is evidence to make you eligible. So at this time, I'd like to get to the speakers, and the first one is Carlo Rothan, Rothan, sorry, who is the Executive Director of Stonewall Columbus. Thank you for coming down.
Oh, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Klein. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for coming in and sharing this day with us. A very important day for our city. Today, Columbus becomes a more equal and fair city, in my opinion. After all, discrimination is not a family value, is it? And the rights that come with a domestic partner registry are among the most basic. They allow citizens to have their loved ones in hospital rooms, to be involved in everything from parenting to burial rights. A registry where unmarried people can declare their partnership can also help emergency personnel know whom to notify in the event of an accident. These are rights inherent to those who marry. Granting them to domestic partners, gay or otherwise, negatively impacts no one who's not involved, yet means everything to those who are. Why is this important? LGBT families, and why is it important to our LGBT families in central Ohio? There's some very practical answers to that, of course, and, and that question, you know, can be outlined and, and depending on what our registry is going to be able to do, that'll go forward, I'm sure, as, as you have your discussions and you make your decisions. But the simple answer is, for the person that needs to prove to an employer, maybe a smaller employer, that they are actually domestic partners, so that they can put their partner on their healthcare plan, is a very important issue. We have people that do call the Center on High in Columbus, and in the past, they've asked us, you know, "I need to register my, my partner because I'm going to put them on our healthcare plan. How do I go about doing that and where can I do that in the city?" And I have to send them to another city in Ohio. Because as our registry is going to note, we're not going to have to live in, in Columbus, Ohio to do that, and, and people in Toledo that have had this benefit for a long time, you didn't have to live there either. So we would send them to Toledo, maybe now Dayton, a couple of other cities have propped up, I think. But it's a very practical thing. But according to the latest 2010 census numbers provided by Williams Institute at UCLA, 14% of LGBT couples are raising children, and 253,440 people are living in same-sex committed relationships in the Columbus metro area. Now, the significance of this registry is not only practical. For many of our LGBT families, the registry is symbolic. It means that our government and our city values the individual and validates our families. It's hard to believe that in 2012, our LGBT families still are often greeted with adversity when attending schools and registering their children for schools, at neighborhood events, churches, and social outings. They are also often excluded from their own birth families, as you may, as you may have witnessed and, and you've seen in Columbus, Ohio. They are offered very little support from those family members and from their long-term friends. This lack of validation from family and friends makes LGBT parents feel isolated, alone, and not worthy. They struggle to maneuver through life feeling unvalidated and not important. By offering this registry to our families, our city is saying that you matter. We want you to stay here. We want you to be able to contribute all of your unique talents to our community in order to make it stronger and make it a better place to live, for both the practical and the symbolic reasons. On behalf of our center, and I am grateful that I'd be able to stand up for some of our LGBT folks and our community, I want to sincerely thank council and thank our city government, of course, our mayor, and President Ginther, and all of you that support this issue. Because it, it does mean a lot to folks, even though you might say to yourself, "Well, they can't get married anyway." What, you know, what good does this do? But it means a lot. It means that we matter, we are significant, and you're saying that it's good that your family's here in Columbus, Ohio. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, thank you for coming down. I really, no, thank, really appreciate it. Certainly appreciate your testimony and everything that you have to say, and I think it bolsters the fact of why we're here tonight and why we're proposing this particular piece of legislation.
And every year, we have a legal seminar in the fall. This year, we did it on parenting, adoption, parents' rights. We will include this in our fall legal series. So we have a free series at the center. If you go to StonewallColumbus.org, you'll find out more about it. But it's very important that we educate our folks as what, what does this mean for them as a family and how can they utilize this and make it work for them. So we will be doing that in the fall, and we'll probably have representation from the city if, if necessary, to make sure that you're all involved in that too. So I'm just very grateful for your support, and I know you've been working on it for a very long time, and, and I'm very grateful the time has come. Thank you so much.
Well, I will volunteer my time if you deem it necessary to come down and be part of that presentation.
Wonderful, thank you.
Because I do think it's important and it underscores why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The next speaker is Maureen Metcalf, who's a board member of Equality Ohio. Thank you for coming down this evening and braving the storm. The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Maureen Metcalf. I'm on the executive committee in the Board of Equality Ohio. I also am the founder and CEO of a consulting firm and teach in an MBA program in, in town. So thank you, Councilwoman Klein, for the opportunity to speak and for proposing this legislation. Tonight, I'm speaking on, on behalf of the Executive Director of Equality Ohio, Kim Walter, who was unable to be here in person. Equality Ohio is a statewide advocacy organization for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and allied Ohioans. Kim Walter has had the pleasure of working with the cities of Toledo, Cleveland, Athens, and Dayton in passing domestic partner registries similar to the one that we're considering this evening. She's also employed, enjoyed the opportunity to work with the city of Columbus on the proposed domestic partner registry. I want to take a moment to paint a picture for you. In 32 states, including Ohio, there is no simple, single document processed to qualify your relationship if you are in a committed unmarried relationship for the purpose of taking advantage of voluntary offered benefits like insurance, pension, family leave, bereavement, relocation assistance, and family memberships. Often, these couples have children whose healthcare coverage may also ride on the voluntary offered benefits. Currently, every employer, service provider, has a different system for each couple, and each couple must complete sometimes arduous processes for each benefit. Increasingly, employers and other providers have turned to requiring some form of government-recognized identification in order to qualify their relationships. The Tell Incorporated is one example. It does accept Ohio domestic partner registries. Columbus would be joining 80 municipalities in 25 states, including five others in Ohio, in offering domestic partner registries. These include Cleveland Heights in 2003, Toledo in 2007, Cleveland in 2010, Athens 2011, and Dayton in 2012. I also want to paint a smaller picture for you. Kim, as I mentioned, is our executive director, and she received her domestic partner registry in 2007 when Toledo passed. The eight-by-10 version is framed on her wall. She and her partner of 13 years are loving, are a loving, committed couple. Presumably, you are or have been in relationships. And think for a moment what that meant to you, the lifelong promise to the person you loved to take care of and be responsible for one another. Domestic partner registry gives couples otherwise unable to do so the chance to make a contract with their government that recognizes the lifelong promises and take care of others and be responsible for one another in good times and bad. I urge you to pass, to vote yes on the domestic partner registry.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming down and sharing that wonderful testimony with us. Thank you.
Thank you again for moving this forward.
Yes, ma'am. Our final speaker is Teri Brown. Thank you for coming down this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Tyson, I want to start by echoing some of the previous sentiments and thanking you so much for doing this. LGBT couples go through a lot of hoops in order to prove our relationships. I had a ceremony in my church with my partner that was recognized by the members of our congregation in Marion Village at St. Paul United Church of Christ, but wasn't recognized anywhere else. So a friend of ours took us to Iowa, where we proceeded to get married legally in the state of Iowa and the other states that accepted. It's sad that some couples have to travel that far currently in order to just be able to prove to some their relationship. And we have to carry around with us at all times living wills, medical powers of attorney, because there's no other proof that we're committed to each other. And being able to have this wallet card while people are not required to recognize that for the ability to make decisions, it gives them the opportunity to recognize that, and that's very important. The recognition of our relationships is sometimes hard for our families, it's sometimes hard for our friends, but it's easy for each other. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing this. I also want to thank you for situating this in such a way that there are no geographic restrictions. You know, the city of Columbus has always been an opening place for all citizens of Ohio and people around the world, and this continues to be able to provide that open, warm environment. And by not adding any expense to the city for this domestic partner registry in these difficult times, you're also helping to make sure that our tax dollars are being spent wisely and those who wish to utilize the service or have that ability. Columbus has always been a wonderful place, and I would argue the best place to live, work, and raise a family. And I'm so happy to live here. I'm so happy to work here, and I'm so happy to have my family here, and this is just another reason why myself and other residents around the city of Columbus feel the same way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. And that concludes our public comments section. Any questions or comments from Councilmember, Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you again, Chairman Klein. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the speakers who've come down and from Carla, Maureen, and Teri for giving your testimony this evening. And certainly, this is just an extension of the work that was passed in 2010, where we've worked really hard with, I know, the Community Relations Council Commission, as well as different groups of individuals, to make sure that the residents, that Columbus would be inclusive and that regardless of race, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity expression, you know, religion, ancestry, national origin, age, disability, familiar status, as well as military status. And so that was kind of the beginning of us moving forward. And so as a city, we have to continue to evolve and to make sure that Columbus is an inclusive city. And so this legislation, not only is it for the LGBT community, but it's certainly for even those same-sex couples that, I mean, opposite-sex couples that may be in situations where, that they also need to have this registry. And I want to make, that's an important point because there are reasons when that happens and occurs. And so this legislation is so important because we also want to make sure that individuals even have an opportunity to be able, as we mentioned in the testimony, to make sure that you could, there's health coverage, there's an opportunity to be able to, be able to visit your loved one in the hospital, to be able to make sure that you have a say if your loved one happens to pass, if there's recreational memberships. This is, this is very, very important because we want to continue to make Columbus a place that is, is inclusive of all. And we also, as a health, the council member over health, I want to make sure that we take administrative burdens off of our hospitals and making sure that, and other employers, that, that they can easily recognize couples and be able to provide the appropriate benefits to them and also help them to do their work. So this really is an extension of other work that we've been doing, and we need to continue as, as our community continues to change and be more inclusive, continue to make sure that we are able to pass legislation that will make sure that every person in the city of Columbus feels like this is a place called home for them. So I thank you for your testimony, and again, I thank Councilmember Klein for even amending the previous legislation and moving it forward for the residents of our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for the kind words and for the supportive statements on this particular piece of legislation. My closing remarks, I just also would like to recognize- My closing remarks, I just also would like to recognize the mayor, Councilmember, and the council president, Andy Ginther, and their work in bringing this legislation forward. And it's just, at the end of the day, I know this city and its leadership isn't interested in discriminating against people based on who they are as individuals. We're a city that promotes tolerance, equality, and diversity because we're open and smart, and we will continue to be that way. And we'll continue to strive to be the model city that echoes those qualities. So, that concludes the domestic partnership registry portion of the agenda. We'll take about a 30-second break, let the administration gather their thoughts, and go right into Title VII and the proposed change. Okay, so the other piece of legislation that's on tonight for consideration and discussion is a code change to Title VII being brought to us by the administration. Representing the administration is Deputy Director Nikki Brandon and Dana Rose, Code Enforcement Administrator. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Deputy Director Brandon.
Thank you. Good evening, Council Chairman Klein and Councilmember Tyson. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to share information relative to Title VII, Health Sanitation and Safety Code. Tonight, I would like to introduce Dana Rose, Code Enforcement Administrator. He is going to be able to talk to you about changes relative to sanitary maintenance and broadening the definition of who's responsible for issues in the right-of-way abutting private property. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Dana Rose to speak more about that.
Good evening, Chairman Klein and Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for having us here tonight to talk about Title VII. Title VII is a city code that it was passed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all persons and occupants of all premises and prevent blight of neighborhoods by establishing minimum standards relative to sanitary maintenance of premises, solid waste, high grass, noxious weeds, rank growth, rodent, insect, and pest control. The proposed code change updates Title VII of Columbus City Code by creating definitions of alley, right-of-way, sidewalk, and modifying the definition of street and person. These code changes were reviewed and recommended by Columbus Property Maintenance Appeals Board. These code changes were also reviewed and approved by the city attorney. I think it's important to note that the meaning and intent of Title VII is not going to be changed by these addition of these definitions. It's, the definitions are just added to make the code more clear and easy to understand. Owners of property and abutting property or right-of-way, abutting their property are still going to be responsible for cleaning the grass and noxious weeds and solid waste from their property and any abutting property. It's also important to note the ordinance doesn't, it's not talking about, and things that are not affected by the ordinance are woodlands, wetlands, and certain agricultural lands. So, some people have questioned that before. So, it's not intended to, to deal with the woodlands. One area that code enforcement gets involved with this, with this code in particular is in the alleys. We get a lot of complaints through code enforcement about the alleys grow up. People don't take care of the brush and the alleys and the tires and the trash and so forth. And that causes several problems. One, the people that live in that area can't get down the alleys to get to their houses or garage. The other thing is the trash trucks can't get down the alleys. And then, also very important is the fact that the, it creates a vision clearance sometimes. Either people backing out of their garages or if the property's on a corner, they can't get out of their, out of their garage without, you know, creating a hazard. So, so this is all a part of Title VII that allows us to be able to cite the property owners to clean the back of their properties to the midpoint of the alley. That's a very important part. Also, the, this ordinance also allows us to cut abandoned properties and clean the properties of solid waste and assess the cost to the Franklin County auditor. And this, these modifications to this ordinance are not going to affect in any way us being able to address abandoned properties. So, I think in, in summary, again, we're just modifying the ordinance. The intent remains the same. We're adding some definitions so people know what we're talking about. We talk about the right-of-way, sidewalk, premises, and so forth. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do not, oh, actually, I do have a question. When you talked about the wildlands, the, that you referred to, is that defined in the code? Or is that more of discretion from the administration of what constitutes that?
Well, there are definitions. It's not in the code. But we run into that occasionally where we have a farm-like, several acres, and there'll be a creek running through the farmland, and there'll be a lot of weeds and high growth around there. Obviously, it's not practical to go, you know, cut both sides of that, clear back to the, to the structure. So, it'd be at our discretion, yes.
And what about someone that, I know this was a topic, at least of today, of someone that lives in the ravine in the Clintonville area or the University area? How is that, it's more of a natural state in a lot of ways? How does that, how does this proposed change affect that?
Right, that wouldn't affect that at all because, again, we're talking just personal, private property, the, the front part of the property that goes to the middle of the street and the back part of the property that goes to the middle of the alley. So, anything that's not a part of a right-of-way like that wouldn't be affected by this ordinance.
Okay. Any, yeah, Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. Mr. Rose, my question is, you just mentioned about the alleyways. And so, if a person has, I guess, this tall grass and things growing behind their house, it is, is it their, behind the, behind their, they have a, their garage or behind their property? Is it their responsibility, because you were just saying some fines, is their responsibility to, to cut that down?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Even, even though if there's no garage back there or even if there is a garage, then they're still responsible to the, to the midpoint of the alley.
To the midpoint of the alley? And if that, and if, and they will be fined if they're not cutting that down? Is that correct?
Wouldn't be fined. They'd be cited and given the chance to, you know, to do it and correct it. Also, they have appeal rights to that and so forth, so.
Okay. And then, if they don't do that, then there, there's a process that will go through to hopefully that they will take care of that and that the city does not have to do the work.
Correct, correct. The process would be that they also, they obviously have the appeal rights to appeal that notice if they want to. There's a process where we would go to court, and they would have an opportunity to present their case in court.
Okay, thank you. I don't think a lot of people realize sometimes that, that they think their property ends at the end of their drive, at the end of their garage or the end of their, what they perceive as their property line. They don't believe that it goes into the alley. So, this is great clarification for the residents of the city of Columbus.
Correct. And the obvious, the obvious reason for that is, I don't know, I think there's several hundred parcels in, in the city of Columbus, and the city of Columbus just wouldn't have the manpower or the budget to, to, you know, cut every parcel behind, you know, and clear back the alley, so.
Thank you, I understand. Thank you. Just making sure people have, this is perfect. They have clarification as to what their obligations are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and thank you, Mr. Rose. We do have one speaker, and maybe the speaker will have other questions that you can address. And if not, well, you'll be dismissed. The first speaker and the only speaker we have signed up is Mr. Tom Wildman.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you just could indicate your, your name, address, any organizations you represent, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Councilman Klein, Councilman Tyson, if anyone else is here. But, yeah, my name is Tom Wildman. I sit on the University Commission. And I am also representative of the Old North Columbus neighborhood and through the Old North Columbus Preservation Society. Yeah, I saw that you had this topic on, on for night. And being a recipient of the, I guess, a pilot project last year of trying to clean up the city of Columbus's alleys and so forth, most of my citizens, when they heard that, were thinking, "Oh, good, the city's going to come out and clean the alleys up because the alleys are technically the responsibility of the city." As you just found out tonight, code is saying that, well, no, the alleys are technically the responsibility of the property owner. I could tell you, in our neighborhood, we were excited that the city was going to take some responsibility. Instead, what we got, everybody got cited. Everybody had, some people had to do fairly costly expenditures to get rid of your, your grapevine, your alanthus trees, all the, you know, mulberries and so forth. And my personal feeling on this, not speaking as a commissioner, or not speaking as a representative of Old North Columbus, but as a recipient of, of the fines that pursued, that the alleys should belong to the city. They should, you know, who uses the alleys the most? Your refuse people, your, your utility companies and so forth. And if you have a property line that ends, if you stake your property and it ends at the alley, then, in my personal opinion, the city should be completely responsible cleaning up the weeds in the alley, and it should not be pushed on as an easement onto the property owner. And I give the example, I mean, I can physically do it, but in my neighborhood, you had a tremendous amount of older people that, that lived there for a very long time, and they don't have the resources to go out there and weed-whack the alleys for the city. You have, also in our neighborhood, students. Yes, landlords might be responsible, but they're not thinking like, like the alleys are their responsibility. They're thinking the property is their responsibility. So, I think if you're going to make a code change, and I, I'm sorry I didn't hear what your exact proposal was. I was walking in. I got caught up in the storm outside, so I could not hear your proposal. But my personal opinion is we should be looking at, if we're going to clean up our alleys, and the city's going to say, "We're going to clean up our alleys," the city should at least look at the alleys as an area that they should step up and maybe do some of the cleaning up and not just to go out and cite everybody for, for, for the, for the grapevines and whatnot. You know, it's, it's, just seems like a double hit, just like the graffiti law was initially, a double hit against the property owner. You stepped up to the plate and you presented a program where the city would come out and help clean that up. Well, maybe the alleys, if your property line ends right at the alley, should not suddenly be added on as an easement onto the property owner, a burden for the property owner. That's just what I came to really say tonight. And that's perspective of some 30, 40 people in my immediate neighborhood last year that got walloped with this code violation. So, thanks very much for your time.
Appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Mr. Rose, anything to say in response to that?
Again, I realize the problem of Mr. Wildman and, and the residents. But, but again, it would be a huge burden on the city to cut every alley and every, every right-of-way abutting property in the city of Columbus. So, again, we're doing it. The city is doing it for vacant, vacant properties, the ones where they've been abandoned and foreclosed. We are doing that, cleaning that, clear back the alley and assessing those costs, trying to clean up the city that way. Occasionally, we'll try to help some people, some elderly people that have financial problems or just can't do it themselves. But for the majority of people, they're just going to have to try to find a way to, to keep that area clean between their property and alley.
So, Mr. Wildman also mentioned another point, and I know it's, it's certainly not unique to just his neighborhood, but it's probably more pervasive in his neighborhood, and that's because there's a lot of students. Whose responsibility is it, the, the renter or the landlord, to, to maintain under this proposed law?
If, it's, it's the owner or person in charge. So, if you have a renter then, or an occupant or leasing, then they're technically in charge of the problems or the property. So, they'd be in charge of any weeds or trash, tires, anything like that. And then, anything to do with the property itself, gutters and roof and windows and heat and that kind of thing is the owner's responsibility. But anything weeds and, and trash would be the occupant.
And then, my final question is, so, the piece of grass that is between the sidewalk and the street, what's the current law for maintaining that, whether it's, let's say, mowing? What's the current law? Not, not the proposed law, but what's the current law? Whose responsibility is it to, to mow that particular piece of property?
Right. That is also right-of-way, that piece of property between the curb line and the sidewalk, or if there's not a sidewalk there, it still goes up that way. That is also right-of-way, which would be the responsibility of the owner or the person in charge, whoever's living there.
Is that in the proposed law or is that currently?
That's currently, that's currently in there, and it's in the proposed law and hasn't changed it.
So, this law, this law doesn't change that? So, if, for whatever reason, this does not pass, folks are still responsible for that piece of grass?
Yes.
So, it's, go ahead.
The reason for the, the modification of this ordinance is to further clarify what right-of-way is and explain better what the right-of-way easements, the abutting property is. So, it's always been in there, but we're trying to clarify it, but it was always enforced like that.
So, in essence, the administration is suggesting that we take that mindset of maintaining the right-of-way and that piece of grass between the sidewalk and the street and that, taking that mindset and putting it into the back of the house as well when it comes to an alley?
That, that was also there, too. We're not changing that at all.
So, this is just a clarification, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Adding some definitions, making people aware of what the right-of-way is and where it is. It's always been there, but we just wanted to clarify it and make it crystal clear when we issue a notice or it comes before any other body.
So, what you're saying is this particular piece of legislation isn't creating new law, it's simply just clarifying existing law?
Exactly, correct.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. Maybe a great way, I'm hoping people are watching this on television and listening to this, but hopefully through the area commissions that this information can be shared so that the neighbors, the, the area commissions can share this information also with their community residents as to this legis, the, the right-of-way and the clearing of the right-of-way has always been the responsibility, either, as you just mentioned, either the property owner or if someone's renting, as you just mentioned, it may be the responsibility of, of the renters. But this, but basically, this is what the, this information is just more of a clarification and that, and that maybe we just need to raise the awareness of it and maybe through our area commissions and the meetings that we attend that we continue to share with them that this has been your responsibility. And if we certainly don't want individuals to be fined that, or get a citation, I should say, so that they have, so they have knowledge of what the, the code already said, what the code says it already is doing. So, anyway, maybe we should just raise the awareness of this so that individuals are not getting those, those citations. That's pretty much it.
That's a very good idea. And I'll also reinforce with our community liaisons and our neighborhood pride centers that when they have their meetings, you know, reinforce this and let people know that, you know, what, what responsibilities are.
Thank you. Now, can I come back to one thing? And you just mentioned that if people do have a problem, like some scenes, you've been able to help them out in the past.
We, we try to do that. We run, occasionally, we'll run into somebody, an elderly lady that just doesn't, she can't physically do it herself. She doesn't have any bodies. She doesn't have any money to hire a done. So, so we do try to help in those situations.
Thank you.
I don't have any further comments. I appreciate you taking the time to explain the proposed clarification to the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing comments? I, I really have no closing comments either on this particular piece of legislation. I appreciate the administration taking the time and coming down. Mr. Wildman for taking the time to come down to share his thoughts. This will be submitted for the record, and I'm sure the other council members will take consideration of what was said prior to the vote on this legislation on Monday. So, thank you for coming down for the Development Committee, and that wraps it up for tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for joining us.